Second by Valenstein, any discussion? All in favor again, please signify by aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Other appointments, the first one today is the North Central Community Action Program Board of Directors and Supervisor Valenstein. I took part here to that board. I have a motion by Supervisor Lightcom. I have a second by Supervisor Fisher. Any discussion? Again, all in favor, please signify by aye.
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 And opposed? And that motion carries. The next one is this jail ad hoc committee. And that committee will report directly to this board. They're going to work autonomously in that effect. They don't report to any other committee. They're going to need input from various members of the community, from various staff members in this county, whether it be the Sheriff's Department, whether it be our courts, building maintenance, and everybody else. The committee, I'm going to charge them with a couple of things, and I'd like to meet with those people just very briefly after this meeting, but I'd like it to include some of these things, and that would be a decision or recommendation anyway by around the 1st of June as we get into this budget process. I'd like a location and design recommendation, a fiscal breakdown to include the cost of proceeding with construction versus doing nothing, the status quo, the hard costs related to construction versus the cost of anticipated maintenance and any updates of the current facility, staffing costs, that would include transport, mental health, recruitment, retention, et cetera. Looking at the current functional obsolescence, such as the fact that ambulances can't fit in the saliport, that might be one thing we're looking at there, and then the impact on the tax levy and what that would mean to the county as well as our bond ratings going forward. I'll explain some of that going forward. You're going to set your own parameters and mission. I'll let you elect a chairman at that and then set the times and dates that you want to have those meetings, but I would like to have some of that by the time we get to the budget time. So to that committee, I'd like to appoint Supervisors Valenstein, Han, Ho Camp, Dow, Lacontine, Bry, and Fisher, and I entertain a motion to them. By Supervisor Lightcom, a second.
Boom.
All right, I'll go with the second by Supervisor Bry. I heard him in there. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye.
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 And opposed? And that carries. This is one of those issues that, you know, I've been here quite a while, and this is probably going to be, at least from a financial standpoint, one of the biggest decisions ever made in this county. And somebody asked me the other day personally where I sit on this issue, and I said, probably firmly on the fence, right in the middle, I don't know. And that's why we need this committee to really ascertain the costs, the benefits, you know, the downside. We just need to know what's in the best interest of the next couple of generations within this county. So I appreciate those who agreed to step up. I talk to each and every one of you ahead of time, and I appreciate your willingness to step up and work on this. Public comment, do we have any public comment today? Any public comment? I see no public comment. One of the things we have on today, and it's one of the, I think, the favorite things that we get to do as a board of supervisors, is acknowledgement and recognition of those long-term employees. But the first thing on our agenda today, Sheriff Becker back here for a plaque presentation to retired Chief Deputy Randy Dorhorse. So Sean, if you'd work your way up to the microphone and bring Randy with you, that would be great.
If I get a little emotional here, bear with me, okay? It's a true honor to recognize Chief Deputy Randy Dorhorse this morning, randomly retiring from the Sheriff's Department next week after 30 years of law enforcement service. That's a rarity now in the profession that we do, the men and women that put on this badge every day. And for somebody to make it 30 years is rare, and I'm very proud to say that Randy's been my teammate, and even more so, a best friend. Randy has lived his entire life in Wood County. He graduated from Auburndale Senior High in 1983. He started his law enforcement career with the Wood County Sheriff's Department in 1988 as a reserve deputy. He also worked part-time for the Pittsill Police Department. He got his first full-time job in law enforcement in 1990 with the Mozenee Police Department. He continued to commute every day from Wood County to his job in Mozenee. While working there full-time, Randy continued his education at Midstate Technical College and graduated with his degree in criminal justice. Wood County Sheriff's Department was lucky to hire Randy in 2000 as a patrol deputy. From there, he worked his way up the ranks within the department. He's held many leadership positions within the agency, chief commander, patrol sergeant, investigator sergeant, and for over the past 10 years, Randy's been our chief deputy. Randy was also a member of our special response team, a firearms instructor, a boat patrol instructor, field terrain officer, and he also managed the Sheriff's Department fleet. Something important to note about Randy's career and the leadership position he has now as chief deputy, second-in-command of the department. One of Randy's biggest roles is putting together and maintaining the budget, a budget that averages over $10 million a year. Because of Randy's efforts, we have made budget every year, and that's not easy to do with an unpredictable law enforcement agency, especially nowadays. Randy treats the budget as if it was his own. We couldn't ask anything more from him. He simply does an awesome job. Randy's the hardest worker I've ever known. He's not an 8 to 4:30 person. He's a person that continues to work until the job's done, and that's ever so prevalent at the time when we're doing the budget. There have been countless times that he's been here after midnight. Even after Randy told us he's going to retire, he hasn't let up. He gave us over six weeks' notice that he's going to retire, just so we can prepare. He also said that we can count on him if we knew after he retires. Speaking on a personal level, I'm lucky to have a coworker like Randy last 20 years. Our career paths have been similar, and I couldn't ask for a better teammate, but more importantly, a best friend. We have been through a lot together, some bad, but mostly good. Personally, I know I wouldn't be in the position I am right now without his support, and for that, I'm forever grateful. Just in the past two years, we as a team done many great things for our organization. I asked some of our coworkers to give me one word that describes Randy. Relax, you'll be okay. Dependable, organized, genuine, dedicated, trustworthy, mentor, friend, selfless, honorable, passionate, supportive, instrumental, integrity, honest, dedicated, ethical, professional, and an associate. That was mine. I can't agree with them more. Thank you, Randy, for your dedicated, selfless service to Wood County. There is no doubt in my mind you made it to Wood County, a separate place to live. You'll be greatly missed. I'll miss seeing you every day as I always professionally greet you as I walk by your Enjoy your well-deserved retirement with your family, and remember, you're always welcome at the Sheriff's Department.
I want to thank you for a wonderful career here in Wood County. You heard the old saying, the grass looks greener on the other side. When I started here, I found out it is actually greener here. Since they wanted us an officer with the county, they have always treated me fairly and with respect, has always felt safe, as you always provide me with adequate training and equipment. I met so many wonderful people here, made so many great friends. Wood County works as a team, which makes us so successful. I want to special thank you to Sean for being such a great supervisor, a friend, and again, thank you for bringing me such a great career here, and I greatly appreciate it, there's no words you could say, so thank you.
I think as you can see up there, Randy, you are widely respected. You will be truly missed in a professional capacity. Like Sean said, you're always welcome here. So missed emotions, we say goodbye, but the one thing I can say is it's always, I have always been proud to be part of the same team that you're on, so congratulations moving forward, enjoy your retirement, and I know you have the respect of everybody in this county, and especially the department, because you look at every single person lined up across the way, I could, thank you. All right, we have a few other long-term employees, not necessarily retiring, but that we need to acknowledge here, I'd like to. Greg Conab, Rep. Ruing, Greg, if you'd come forward.
Thank you, Chairman Plume, Vice Chair Fisher, and respected members of the board. Tough act to follow there, Sheriff Becker and some very nice comments about Chief Deputy Dorhorse, but we'll give it a shot. Shannon Lobner has been with the county for 25 years. She started in 1995 as an intake worker, which is essentially the front desk at our office. In November of 1998, she was promoted to financial manager, and since then, she has trained every single person that's been hired to work our front desk. Everyone except for two employees in the office started at the front, including her, one of them being me, and I suppose someone could say maybe it would have turned out better had she trained me as well, but in 2000, she was awarded the Worker of the Year by the Wisconsin Child Support Enforcement Association. And in January of 2009, I started in the Child Support Agency, and I quickly realized how important she was, how dedicated she was to the program, and how much of an asset she was to the Child Support Agency. In 2012, when I became the director, we eliminated the management position, and Shannon took on more responsibilities in the department. Over the last nine years, I have watched firsthand that she has grown into a tremendous manager. She's respected statewide for her knowledge of child support financials. She's the one that often explains to me why we can't do certain things when I come up with ideas of how to improve performance, but she's also the one that helps me and our staff implement new ideas that have led to successful outcomes, not only for our performance, but for the customers that we serve. I couldn't ask for Betty, a better deputy director to serve with. She's been a tremendous partner. She's helped me through a lot of challenges that we've had as a department. She helps with the budget preparation. She takes care of all of our vouchers, processes all of the payments, enters court orders. Her work is second to none statewide as far as her ability with child support financials. In closing, I just want to read an article that appeared in the Wisconsin Rapids Tribune and Marshfield News Herald in August of 2000. I was going through some old things, trying to find information on Shannon, and this is what I came up with, and actually, it's going to take some of you folks down memory lane, as Dave Jankovic is quoted in the article. Dave was a past child support director and then served on the county board for a period of time. Jankovic said the agency's 13 employees are a close group, work hard, and are effective in their jobs. He also credited Shannon Lobner, financial manager, with much of the program's success. Last year, collection of child support payments was transferred from the county to one state location. Lobner worked to get her training done and understand the new system before it was put into place in the county, Jankovic said. He credited Lobner with a smooth transition for county residents. We had other agencies in the state asking to borrow Shannon, to train their people, but we just couldn't afford to let her go, and that still holds true today. We can't afford to let her go. Shannon, thank you for 25 years.
We're going to make you come up here.
I was happy to stand in the corner, but thank you. Thank you, everyone. Very, very glad to be here. I don't know that I'll look forward to another 25 years, but absolutely, it has been a good experience here at Wood County, so thank you very much.
Thanks again. We have a few of our long-term partners and employees who aren't here today, part of that is facilities they work within, but I'd like to just quickly recognize Betty Neneman, who has 25 years with Edgewater Haven. They will not be here today. Next on my list, although I'm looking back there and I'm not really seeing, I'll announce it, so it's Laura Clark, and for her 30 years of service, currently in the clerk of court's office, and most of you probably know Laura, whether it was her service in the Sheriff's Department for many, many years, or the work that she does up in the clerk of court's office, and we'll personally get her up here in a different month since I'm not here today. Nancy Ullston is the next person I'd like to recognize. Nancy has 30 years to the Health Department. I believe Sue is appearing by WebEx. Sue, are you there?
Yeah, I am. Can you hear me?
Perfectly.
Okay, and Nancy is sitting right over there. We're about 7.5 feet apart. I'm going to remove my mask while I talk, and I'm not going to look at Nancy because I'm afraid that I might get emotional. I am really excited typically about presenting these anniversary class to people who have shown such a long-term commitment to Wood County, but this particularly having bittersweet, and Nancy is going to be retiring in early March after 30 years of service with Wood County. It's going to leave a major hole in our department and a hole in my heart as her supervisor. I'm very happy for her, and she has put in her time, and I wish her a very happy and healthy retirement. Maybe we can come back in person in February for the retirement class. But I first heard about Nancy back in 2002, I think it was, I worked in Pippin County and I was working on a mosquito project there, and Nancy was the mosquito, and so I reached out to her for some guidance, ideas about taking care of some mosquito issues we were having, because she was having something rough here in Wood County. And mosquito work sounds kind of exciting right now. I'd rather be doing that than COVID, so maybe for the blessing of God. Nancy and I started to work together in 2005, and she has been an outstanding asset to our department, operating single day. She's got a wonderful personality and making sense of humor. She is full of compassion. She's sensible, reasonable, passionate. I could go on and on. She's just a wonderful human being right to the core. Most of you know about Nancy and her groundwater work. She is a state-wide go-to on that as well. Her knowledge on groundwater quality and issues with quality is second to none, and her shoes are large to fill. I could go on and on about awards, statewide awards that she's won, associates she's led, her areas of expertise, and she's extremely humble and likely getting a little bit embarrassed, but I'm still not going to look at her. I'll just reflect on saying that our department is going to miss Nancy, Wood County is going to miss her, but I look forward to continuing our friendship for many years to come, so thank you for 30 years, Nancy. We'll do the retirement thing next month, and we'll sort of bring it up for a good send-up when we can, so if you want to say a few words. Okay, well, thank you so, so much for that. I really appreciate it, Sue. 30 years have really gone by in a flash. I can't believe it. In this past year, about 30 years, my office location has changed four times. The environment and population grew from two people way back when I started to now six, and support persons are making big counties. We're making a pretty good hand in environmental services throughout our area. Recently, we made some progress in bringing the groundwater concerns for the county to the forefront, which I'm very happy to see we're giving some progress on that. I just want to say thank you to the county. It's a great place to work, and I am truly grateful for having had this opportunity. Thanks, thanks much.
Thanks, Nancy. Laura, you're up. Laura Hyden, our dispatch manager, coming forward.
Thanks, County Board. Thanks, Lance. Today, we're here to honor an employee of ours that has been here 30 years, three decades. That's how long Anita's been dispatching for the citizens of Wood County. What a milestone. Back in 1990, when Anita started, we used punch cards for complaints and timestamping. Dispatchers were both matron jailers as well as dispatchers. You never knew what you would be walking into. We certainly have come a long way from those punch cards. We now have computer-aided dispatch system to being just dispatchers. From jail control to the basement to our current location, Anita has seen it all. Anita had to learn and relearn her job as technology progressed throughout the decades. Sometimes it was easy to learn a new system, sometimes it was easier to grab the pen and paper. Yet Anita's willingness to help others has kept her here to maneuver through the technology that our jobs have progressed through. Her creative, outside-the-box thinking, her resourcefulness, and her willingness to help others has made her a valued employee. During her career in dispatch, Anita has filled many roles. She was a member of the Sheriff's Department's Special Response Team, she was a training officer, and she was a lead dispatcher. Loyal and dedicated employees are the foundation of success. Anita has been a significant part of our team, and we couldn't imagine her in our workplace without her. Our apparent, her, we appreciate Anita as achieving 30 years and contributing to our success over the years, from delivering babies over the phone to CPR saves and to helping all of our officers and deputies get home safe at night. We appreciate all that she has done for our department. I just want to congratulate Anita on 30 years.
I just want to, I've been looking forward to getting this plaque. I really wish it. And it's been a long time, and I can't imagine doing anything else. And everybody keeps asking me when I'm going to retire, but I really couldn't tell you.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Anita. You know, over the years, if you've been here long enough, you tend to interact with many of these long-term employees at various times along the way. Anita, I tell you, I've always felt very comfortable in your answer to a call that I had to make. I always appreciated what you did there. Next employee that we recognize is Brenda Molden. Brenda works at Edgewater Haven. She's been there 30 years. They cannot be here today, but I wanted to mention that. We will do a recognition in person at some point. And then Trent, you have the next one from the Highway Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the Highway Commissioner and Randy Cunningham were not able to be here today, so Roland sent a statement he wanted read to the board. Randy started work at the Highway Department on July 2nd, 1990, as a patrol helper. He soon became a patrolman with a section of highway he maintained throughout the year. He has many compliments in his file from previous supervisors, noting his ability to maintain his equipment and doing a great job of clearing snow and ice, and always being available to come in at all hours, day or night. In addition to his patrolman duties, Randy assisted at the asphalt plant and volunteered for projects where he gained valuable experience operating various equipment. In 2007, he was assigned to run the backhoe and has developed into a very proficient and specialized operator. He maintains this role to this day. Randy has become a go-to member for our crew for his attention to detail, safe working practices, creative thinking, and his get-the-job-done attitude. Congratulations, Randy, on reaching a service milestone with Wood County Highway. Your talents and efforts have helped the department accomplish so much. Thank you for your hard work and dedication. Sincerely, Roland Hawk, Highway Commissioner.
Thank you, Roland. Thank you, Randy, for your service. Appreciate it. Next on our list here, we have two employees that have been with us 35 years. The first one, and most you know her because she's in the courthouse here every day, is Lisa Downs. Lisa's not with us today. Peter, did you want to say anything today or different type? Okay. And the other one is Mary Nenek, who works in Human Services and also been with us for 35 years. The commitment shown by those employees, and as you can hear, the satisfaction that Dave expressed in working for the county is certainly good to hear as somebody who sits on the board. So I'd ask our board one more time, just a round of applause for all of those employees who've served. Thank you very much. That's always the fun part of being a county board supervisor. I guess at this point in time, we move on with, well, I guess I'm into the packet at this point. So we've taken care of the minutes. We have the referrals on page eight of your packet for January, a resolution from Templeville County, a resolution for Jackson County, and a second from Jackson County, all of that forwarded to appropriate committees to be looked at. Let's move on to the committee reports and resolutions. On page nine in your packet, page nine and 10, the January 5th meeting of the Operations Committee. We have a, skip to page there. On page 11, we have Supervisor Lightcom. Sorry about that, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm slow getting my hand up. Back to page nine, the first motion there, discussion that Finance Director Thurber had with Baird regarding Justice Center financing. I just wanted to communicate to the rest of my fellow supervisors, it was about a year ago that some of us went to Green Lake County, and we saw the newly-built Justice Center there, which was truly impressive, a little bit smaller county than Wood County. So this is the first reference I saw to Justice Center, and I think our newly-appointed jail study ad hoc committee might want to consider what, I don't know if I didn't look at the plans well enough or what, but what a Justice Center might look like in Wood County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Lightcom. On pages nine and 10, on 11, we have monthly letter comments from our county clerk, Trent Minor. On page 12, more of the same, and that's an explanation of the elections budget. That goes to page 13 as well. Beginning on page 14 and running through page 18, monthly update from Human Resources Department. Page 19, comments for the Treasurers Office. Employee Wellness on 20. Brings us to the first resolution in the packet. On page 21, I'd ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution 21-1-1. To amend the 2020 County Clerk Elections Budget for Unanticipated Revenues and Expenditures Unanticipated During the Original Budget Process. Fiscal Note: No additional cost to Wood County. Additional expenses are funded by increased revenues and designated fund balance for elections. The adjustment to the budget totals $82,000.
I have a motion by Supervisor Fire, a second by Supervisor Lacontine. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? Please vote. Dana, Al, Joe?
Whacker, yes.
Sirflue, yes.
Hey, I'm on the county board, maybe Lieutenant called you back.
Did we get all of those? We're missing one.
Supervisor Bry?
All right, thank you. That resolution passed unanimously. That's going to take a little while, but we'll get that figured out yet too. Second resolution, page 22.
This will be Resolution 21-1-2. To create an FTE, Public Health Strategist, and a halftime community health planner position, and to amend the 2021 public health budget for additional revenue and expenditures unanticipated during the original budget process. Fiscal Note: No cost to Wood County. The adjustment to the budget totals $125,000.
Thank you. I have a motion by Supervisor Clennett, and a second by Supervisor Fire. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? I would again ask you to please vote, and I'd ask those virtually to mention your name and hand you a vote, please.
Hamilton, yes.
Whacker, yes.
Roser, yes.
Bry, yes.
Sirflue, yes.
Thank you. That was pretty good. And that resolution passes with one vote in the negative.
18 to 1.
18 to 1. I guess I could have done the math too, but yeah. Yeah, we had one no vote. Next resolution, page 23, again brought forth by the Operations Committee. And Trent, if you're ready.
This will be Resolution 21-1-3. To approve the continuation of the Self-Inured Workers Compensation Program for the County of Wood in compliance with Wisconsin Administrative Code DWD 80.60-3. Fiscal Note: The general assessment rate for self-insured employers is prorated and assessed as a percentage of the state. assessed as a percentage of the state of Wisconsin Workers' Compensation Division costs compared to insurers' claims costs.
Thank you. Again, a motion by Supervisor Clendening, a second by Supervisor Valenstein. Any discussion? Any discussion? All right, let's vote. Virtual votes?
Hamilton, yes.
Iger, yes.
Rosa, yes.
Supervisor Bri?
Yes.
Supervisor.
Okay, thank you. Again, thank you for those that are on either phone or webex. Appreciate it. That resolution passes unanimously. Takes us to page 24 in your packet, the Health and Human Services Committee of December 15. Health and Human Services Committee meeting of December 17 on pages 25 and 26. Update from the health department beginning on page 27 through 30. And again, you know, it's been a time in the original COVID. The people in this, across the county, there's no exception, but this department extraordinarily hired. It's basically a 24/7. They've been helpful to, I hear from the school districts, from other municipalities, they've been extremely helpful in every way they've been asked. So again, congratulations and thank you out to the people in that department. But that report, 27 through 30. On page 31, you see the letter there that congratulates the Wood County Health Department and what they did. And I thought we might as well put that in the packet because all you ever hear are the complaints. You never hear the good, but this is great to get this correspondence and this letter. Page 32 in your packet is the beginning of the Human Services Department monthly report beginning with Director Ruwink. And that goes all the way from 32 through page 40. Does anybody have any questions on any of those pages, 32 through 40? Page 41 and 42, Veteran Service Officers Report. 41 and 42. Page 43 is the minutes of the Public Safety Committee of December 14th, begins on 43, runs through page 47. 43 to 47. Traffic Safety Commission meeting on pages 48 and 49. The Civil Service Commission had several meetings. They had four of those beginning on November 16. Those are pages 50 through 53. The Humane Officers Reports beginning with November 54 and running through page 58. Then we have the monthly report from the Sheriff's Department beginning with Rescue, Rescuers 59 to 63. All of the reports, including the jail reports, K-9 reports, all of those run all the way through page 77. Did anybody have any questions on anything out of the Sheriff's Department? We recognized Randy Doros today for his service to the county, and because of the notice he gave and the heads up we had, they went through the interview process the other day, and Randy's position has been filled, which will create some backfilling again in the Sheriff's Department. But we have that replacement in place already. So they moved along swiftly, got that done. They did internal, they did testing, internal interviews, and then they brought in some external chief deputies from several other counties. And I got to sit in on those. And the one thing I think is really important, and I wanted to relay to this board, is every single one of those external interviewers made the comment that whatever our sheriff is doing is right. He said, because any one of the candidates who applied for that position would be qualified and could fill that position. And they also, they wish they had the same amount of possible succession within their departments as they go forward. So they were, I don't know, extremely impressed with what we have in the pipeline and leadership going forward for the next many, many years. And I think that's a reflection of what the whole department does. So again, that was 59 through 77 on the Sheriff's Department. Seed, Monday, December 15th, on page 78. Their regular committee meeting of Wednesday, January 6th, beginning on 79 and running through 82, 79 through 82. Supervisor Light, no.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the bottom of page 80, there's a date error that I just wanted to clarify. The Central Sands Groundwater County Collaborative meeting, that is not Thursday, January 21st, it's Monday, the 25th. The time on that is 10 o'clock. It's virtual, and most of you that are involved would have that blue link, but the date is January 25th. I want to take just a second here. I think some of you listened with interest today when Sue Comfriman congratulated Nancy Eggleston on her groundwater work. At the county level and at the regional level, we're coming at this from like three directions, four directions, and this is just one of them. We work as a county board on groundwater problems. We have a Citizens Groundwater Group in Wood County that's advisory to seed. And then this, this group, I think many of you probably don't, aren't aware of what's being done regionally. Juneau, Adams, Wood, Washere, Portage, and Marquette Counties are all working as the Central Sands Groundwater County Collaborative, and that's that date that was in there. If any of you, that meeting is upcoming next Monday, if any of you are interested. We usually don't have a large public in attendance, but virtual almost makes it easier. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thanks for the correction and clarification there. All right, again, their minutes, pages 79 through 82. The Golden Sand Resources Conservation Development Council, beginning with the Finance Committee meeting on page 83, and those run through 92, 83 through 92. We have the Land Information Council minutes on 93 and 94. I guess and 95, I don't know how long it is there. Page 96, report from UW Extension, beginning on 96, running through 102. Supervisor Curry.
I'd like to make a comment on what's on the supervisor's desk of the extension update. It is more to the public. At the last SEED committee meeting, our Horticultural Specialist Janet Weir gave a report on master gardener. And there is a change, a significant change in the training for master gardener that might impact the public in the future. I'm not going to say it's going to be easier, but it's, you can receive the training and not do all the things that have made some people drop out of the program. So if there's an interest by the public in the master gardener program, you should probably contact the Extension Office. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Curry. Again, anything on their minutes? And then we'll go to the UW Extension Reports beginning on 96 and running through 102. Land and Water Conservation Department, their report beginning with Director Wisher Penix on 103 and running through 108. The report for planning and zoning, beginning with Director Greenberg's on 109 and running through 114. Citizens Groundwater Group meeting on page 115 and 116. And then the PPE meetings as well, some of the economic development ones, beginning on 117 and running through 120. You know, a lot of, I know we have supervisors who attend some of these meetings, whether personally or virtually. I can say this because I have the opportunity to attend a number of different county board or county committee meetings. I think we've done a pretty remarkable job in our county trying to balance all of the needs that COVID has created to respond to those. We've done that through our health department. We've done it through the PPE meetings, through our economic development meetings. And I think overall, generally, as I talk to the public, and I'd like to hear it from other supervisors, if they're not hearing the same thing, generally, the residents of the citizens of Wood County have been pretty pleased with the way we handle things in this county. So thank you to all those who've done that work, participated in those meetings, and have helped us through this process. The Jay and Al Committee, their meeting from December 15th on 121. Their regular monthly meeting of January 8th, beginning on 122, running through 124. The Criminal Justice Task Force Minutes from December 16th on 125 and 126. Their meeting of December 15th on 127. The report to, by Director Ruwink to his committee, date of January, beginning on 128 and ending on 128. That one wasn't stapled together. Court Counsel's Report on 129. The report from our Register of Deeds Office on 130. And that brings us to the minutes of the Highway Infrastructure Recreation Committee on 131, 32, and 33. Questions there? The report, the monthly report from the Highway Commissioner, beginning on 134, runs through 138. Then we have a report for the Park and Forestry Department, beginning with Director Schoolies on 139 through 143. Pages 144 through 153 is the 2021 work plan. Any questions there? And then we have the resolution on page 154, brought forth by Herk.
This will be Resolution 21-1-4. Approval of the 2021 Wood County Forest Annual Work Plan. Fiscal note, potential state loss, potential loss of state aid revenues of $49,180.
We have a motion on that resolution by Supervisor Clendening, a second by Supervisor LaFontaine. Any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? All right, please vote.
Rosa, yes.
Hamilton, yes.
White, yes.
Bri, yes.
Sir, yes.
Thank you. That resolution passes 19-0, again unanimously. Thank you very much. Page 155 in your packet is the beginning of the Property Information Technology Committee meeting of January 4th. That's 155, 156, and 157. Monthly letter of comments from IT beginning on 158 and running through 162. Letter of comments from Facilities Manager on 163. Minutes of the Central Wisconsin State Fair Board Directors from October 19th on page 164 and 165. Central Wisconsin State Fair Board Minutes on 166 and 167. Minutes of McMillan Memorial Library, Board Trustees, 168, 169. South Central Library System, 170 through 172. Before I get to this last couple of resolutions here, Bill, did you have anything on clean sweep you wanted to mention or any of that stuff coming up? Or not yet?
Well, yes, I can't. It's going to be in the Southwood County area. It's going to be, I believe, with town of Saratoga this time of time in the fall. The date has changed, but I don't know that for sure. But I'll get that. Thank you.
We'll get some other updates. I just noticed that in the packet at one point, I know that, you know, Bill has kind of been front and center on this all along. Page 174, I'll let you go to page 173, I guess, first. I was working on that earlier. That's a resolution regarding to recognition of the long-term employees. Intentional motion approval on that. I guess I got him on the board. Supervisor LaFontaine, a second by Supervisor HoCamm. Can I do this by voice vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. The last resolution on packet, and always a sad one, is in, is related to life in public service of Larry Jorgensen. Larry was a member of this board of supervisors, a longtime older person in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. And Trent, if you'd like to read that.
This will be Resolution 21-1-6, relating to the life and public service of Larry Jorgensen.
Thank you. And I have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Fire, a second by Supervisor Valenstein. All in favor, please signify by aye.
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 I'd like to note that that was unanimous, and then I would ask that this body please rise in recognition of passing Supervisor Jorgensen. And I thank you. Now Larry was a member of this board, like I said, the city, and a longtime educator in the Wisconsin American School District. And I'm sure there's a large number of people that are out there in this community because he taught for a long time that were in his classes at some point somewhere. That brings me to the end of the packet. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is February 16th. And if I could, I'd like to grab that jail ad hoc committee real quick, maybe over in the side room over here as soon as we're done with this meeting. Is there anything else that needs to come before us today? Again, I want to thank you all for your participation. It's extremely difficult in the circumstances that we've been operating for almost the last year. With that, I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.